Evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. The time right now, depending upon which watch I look at, is 7:00 PM or 7:01 PM. I'm going to go ahead and ask that Clerk Wykoff, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present and establishing a quorum are Councilmembers Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Walker. Will you please leave us on the pledge?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item that we have on our agenda is public comments. And Councilmembers, I'm going to ask that you just kind of bear with me. I think pollen is bothering my throat this evening and wasn't having that problem earlier today, so I'm sorry about that. So if, has anybody signed up for a public comment this evening? Okay. Is there anybody that would like to have public comment this evening? That's not the public hearing, but it's a public comment. Okay, seeing none, I will forego the script for that. The next item on the agenda then is item number five, 5.1 specifically. This is a public hearing for the proposed citywide rezone and associated amendments to the Unified Development Regulations, MMC Title 22. I'm going to ask that our Planning Manager Kate Turtleow please come forward. While she's doing that, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to summarize how the hearing goes. So after the hearing is open, city staff will present a staff report and council members may ask questions for clarification of staff or wait until another time. The public hearing is now open. For the record, I'm informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has forwarded to the city council all timely written material or otherwise recordable comments regarding the subject matter of the public hearing to the council. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to ask that Planning Manager Turtleow, please go ahead and provide a description of the matter before us for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm on, yeah, okay. Before I start into my presentation, I just want to remind you what's in your packet. There is, of course, the Agenda Bill background information, but there is also the draft ordinance for your consideration after tonight's hearing, the Planning Commission findings, facts, and recommendation, the actual application that shows you everything that we're proposing to do, a comparison of the future land use map with the current and future zoning, the environmental documentation, letter from Commerce, and then I did want to confirm, we sent all property owners that would be affected by this, the postcard noticing. So all property owners were notified. And that, just one final note, we did receive an inquiry from at least one resident in the Strawberry Lane neighborhood. I do want to confirm that is not on the table. We followed what the council asked us to do with the future land use map. So I do want to be very clear, there is no rezone in that area. All right, next slide. Okay, so you adopted a brand-new comprehensive plan in December of last year. The first phase of implementing that is the citywide rezone. And so what I'll be going through this evening is those proposed changes to our official zoning code and development regulations for consistency with our new Monroe 2044 comprehensive plan. I am calling this Phase One because it's the easy piece. The rest of the policy implementation is going to take longer, so this is Phase One. Next slide. And then just a refresher, we're doing this because every 10 years, we get to update our comprehensive plan. Part of that process is to evaluate, do we have enough land to accommodate the next 20 years of growth? So for this planning horizon, it's 2044, and that's people, housing, and jobs. The new change from this last one was not only do we need to make sure we have enough of this, we have some new requirements with housing to ensure that we have an adequate supply for people of all income levels. Doing our analysis, it begins with the Snohomish County 2019 buildable lands and then looking at how much land we have in our urban growth area, what's been developed and what's left. And based on all that analysis, we concluded there was not enough land, but it wasn't at a position where we needed to expand the urban growth area. We needed to make some minor adjustments to the zoning. And so that is what the council adopted last year. Next slide. And then just a refresher, as we move from the comprehensive plan to development regulations, Planning Commission, councils, city staff need to continue reminding ourselves of the planning, GMA planning policies. Again, the plan that was adopted, we're still keeping our boundaries as is, so we're training, reducing sprawl. We have adequate public facilities to service the anticipated growth that will occur. We reached out to our public, so there was public engagement for this next phase of developer, next phase of planning. And so just, I'm going to continue reminding you as we go through development code changes. Next slide. All right, and this is really the meat of tonight's public hearing. The zoning map on the left is the current zoning. It was primarily adopted in 2019, and then it was updated when the city completed the Monroe Woodlands annexation in the northwest corner. The areas that are identified for change are highlighted on the map on the right, and they are outlined in the red boundaries. I'm going to walk you through them again one more time. The northwest city limits, the change for that was residential four to mixed-use general. Then all of the light yellow, which used to be residential four, is becoming residential seven or seven units per acre. And this one, I just want to stop on briefly. I think most of you are aware that most of Monroe actually, as the residential development occurred, most of the Freylands, as well as the development north of US2, was done through planned residential developments. And so even though the zoning has been R4, the development has actually been closer to five units per acre. There were a couple of contract rezones in there. And then another change at the state and county level is as we move forward with annexation, you need to have six net units per acre. So this change from R4 to R7 will help in many ways, in addition to helping us get to that 2044 population forecast. All right, moving on, the area on 179th between the SR 522 bypass and Main Street will also be changing to mixed-use general. The Smith Brother property on North Kelsey will be reverting back to general commercial. That's just two parcels. There are two city-owned parcels for the food bank. Those are transitioning from residential seven to mixed-use neighborhood, and that really is acknowledging the actual use there of the food bank. And then the next final big change is that we are removing the transportation zoning district and leaving it as right-of-way for streets. Next slide. All right, so to accompany the zoning code or the official zoning map changes, we do need to make a few changes to the municipal code in Title 22, and that is to remove the R4 single-family residential designation. And then the next one is also remove the, and that's all the tables in Chapter 2214, excuse me, 2216. In 2214, we're removing both the R4 and the transportation zone, and then we will be repealing all of Chapter 2230, which is the transportation zoning district. Next slide. All right, and so the recommendation for your consideration this evening is to conduct your public hearing. At the conclusion, consider all of the information, background, public testimony, and the motion is, we're recommending is accept first reading of ordinance 006-2005 to adopt the Monroe 2044 citywide rezone and associated amendments to the Monroe Municipal Code Title 22 Unified Development Regulations. As an alternative, next slide. You can continue the public hearing. You can request us to go back and make some modifications with specific guidance, or do not accept the first reading of ordinance and again redirect staff. That concludes the report. I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. So turn to council, do you have any, councilmembers, do you have any clarifying questions of staff? Again, any clarifying questions on what's been just presented? All right. Seeing none, at this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this matter? We have people who signed, okay. So there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Your time will begin after you introduce yourself and provide your area of residence or association with the city of Monroe. Please be respectful to all speakers and the hearing procedure itself. Please also note that this hearing is an opportunity for you to address the council. It is not a question-and-answer session of sorts. So I'm going to go ahead and invite Hank Wiltz.
Wiltz.
Wiltz to come on up and welcome. And if you'd just please state your name and area of residence, which you've marked on here for the record, I'd appreciate it. And then we'll start the three-minute timer that's up on the board.
Sure. Like I said, my name is Hank Wiltz. I live in the farm up on Resticue Road. And I just basically, you said it's not a Q&amp;A, but in the materials that I read, one of the goals was to obviously increase density, and there is talk in there of auxiliary dwelling units. And I'm just curious if this, because our HOA explicitly forbids ADUs on the lots, and so I'm wondering if this in any way overrides that, or if we have a prohibition there, if that is still in effect. That's all I'm wondering.
All right, thank you very much. So staff can, will go ahead and give you their card and they'll follow up on that.
Okay.
And just a second. Yes. Yep. So we do have somebody who's presenting on ADUs later tonight, and it may be that she can go ahead and reference that unless it comes up next.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Okay. So councilmembers, do you have any questions to ask of staff? Kent, Kent, Councilmember Gamble.
I would like to hear about ADUs.
Yes. So for the citywide rezone, there is no ADUs. That's all AD, but I'm happy to answer that specific question if you're interested. The state change does not give cities to supersede homeowner association regulations. So they would, they would have to change them on their own. Correct.
Good. Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
It's probably a not very educated question, but does anybody see the, anybody think there's something going on that changes everything that's R4 to R7 as far as density, other than complying with Snohomish County's rules? I mean, anybody that lives in an R4 going to an R7 has the possibility of somebody, a developer coming in and buying your four houses that make up an acre and now building density and seven units on it. With that in mind, I don't agree with it. I don't care what the county wants personally. They don't care what I want either, so we're even. But it seems to me that this is a step towards making the people that live in single-family housings on R4 or one per four acre, four per one acre, is if you live long enough, you're going to lose your single-family house to something that's more dense, either a two-story, two-unit, or whatever, whatever a developer can get on your property so they can make more money. So that's, that's my feeling about what I read in this. If you can just spell me, I would be glad to hear it. I probably won't live to see it, but some people in this town might. But I mean, it's just to me, it's like, it's an underhanded way for developers to get in and make more houses on less property and screw people out of single-family dwellings, out of single-family dwellings. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to address with that?
Sure, I'm happy to. When the council adopted the Monroe 2044 comprehensive plan, you actually set the stage for this rezone to occur. The lowest residential designation was changed, so R4 does not exist in your comprehensive plan anymore, so R7 is the lowest density that you will have in Monroe. You are correct, though, that if you have a property that is R4 and is changing to R7, it has the potential of having more density. The other thing is the bulk standards will change a little bit. The R4 had 50% lock coverage, R7 has 60%, so there is the potential to see change. That is absolutely correct.
Thank you. With that explanation, I apologize to the Monrovians that I was talked into that whenever I adopted that and didn't vote against it, but I would have only been one, one vote. But had I understood that, I probably would not have voted for the change in the comp plan, but it's OBE, as we say in the military at this point.
Thank you. Turning to the rest of the council, are there any other questions at this time or a motion? Councilmember Beaumont.
I move to accept first reading of ordinance 006/2025 to adopt the Monroe 2044 citywide rezone and associated amendments to Monroe Municipal Code Title 22 Unified Development Regulations.
Good. Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Gamble, and my pause there was I was thinking that Jody's going to throw something at me because I should close the public hearing. So we are now going to close the public hearing. This is the conclusion of the public hearing unless there are objections. Pause. No. This hearing is now closed. There was a motion put on the floor, and there was a second. I've already said that. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Just want to make sure you're clarifying on the question about the R4 to R7 change. If I remember correctly, we were sort of doing that to, it's almost an effort at compliance from the direction that is coming down from the state that is usually tied to funding. So we're kind of doing some of these things to align ourselves with the coming policies because right now, it seems like the conversation at the legislature and at different planning bodies in the areas, full steam ahead to increase housing supply, which includes increasing or decreasing regulations that have held back density in the past. So I guess when I voted, it wasn't that I support single-family housing going to density. It was that I knew that the state and other policies are going to make this one of our only options. And so that was something that went into the thought process of passing the comprehensive plan. So I just had a question, if we hadn't done that, if we had drug our feet and sort of tried to fight the state, what happens to cities or what would have happened if we decided not to pass our comprehensive plan or kind of hold out?
Sure. You want me to answer?
Yes.
So Monroe's comprehensive plan, the only statutory requirements is we accommodate growth through 2044. Based on the analysis that was done, beginning with the 2019 buildable lands report, we did not have enough land in the boundaries we have under current zoning. So an easy change, not dictated by the state, was for us to go from R4 to R7 because that also helped us facilitate a few other things such as annexation. And there are three, four areas of the city that we would like to see annexed by 2044 to help us meet those growth targets. So if the city had not adopted its comprehensive plan, it, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, we did not make these changes because the state said, you shall increase your density. We needed to do it to accommodate our population. If the city did not, was not compliant, we would be in potential of not getting grant funding and other things, but that, that's not why we were recommending this change. It was truly to accommodate that 20-year forecast for future Monrovians.
And a follow-up question, in that conversation of R4 to R7, let's say I own a single-family home on, I don't know, a single-acre lot. That change from R4 to R7 doesn't require that if I was to rebuild my property, it has to have seven units on the acre. I can still do it.
Yeah.
Single-family home. It just gives me the opportunity that if I was to go, I'm retired and I want to build seven units on my property and I'll stay in one and I can rent out six more, it just gives you that option. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
The, we do, the city of Monroe does not have minimum density requirements until you get to the residential 25 units per acre. There is a minimum for that. This is still considered a detached product, our neighborhood. So if you choose to develop at a lower rate, absolutely.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher.
First of all, Scarborough, thanks for bringing this up. So yeah, part of it for me to kind of maybe explain to you a little bit, because I do have similar feelings as you with that, but to, as Kate said, to make it so we could hit those, those numbers for growth, that other little over 4,000 by 2044, or whatever it is, knowing that this is something that would probably have to happen. So I don't think you're a horrible person for approving the comp plan, but that's kind of what my approach was. Something that we were going to have to do to account for our population growing, so that's all. Thanks for bringing it up.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I turn to the council. Councilmember Scarborough. Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Scarborough, a second from Councilmember Hanford to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is item number seven, 7.1 specifically, Festival Lot: Presentation of Concept Options and Proposed Public Engagement Process with Patrick Tardy. Good evening, Patrick.
Good evening, Patrick.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Wasn't sure if I missed when I was joining, that you had introduced me. Sorry about that. It's great to be here with you this evening and to follow up on the festival lot from our initial conversation over a month ago. I'm going to be tag-teaming here with Liam McCorkle on this presentation, but before we dive into that, just to let you know that we'll be presenting, as you said, Mayor, the current concepts that could accomplish our goal of a festival lot. Sorry, I'm losing my voice too, lucky, Mayor, from the pollen. We'll be presenting those concepts, also presenting our proposed public engagement process, and the hopes, of course, would be that we get the green light to move forward with this exciting project after this evening. So I don't know if there's a version of this that gets larger, but if you can all see it fine, then that's fine. We'll just proceed with what's on the screen. And I think the next slide will jump into the background, which we'll let Liam kick off the presentation with.
Thank you, Patrick, and good evening again, council. Most of this you have heard before, and really my script is kind of there on the screen for you, but the festival lot concept, just to give you some initial background to contextualize the presentation, has really been discussed by the Monroe community since as early as the 1970s. And it was first presented or offered to the Monroe community by the Hispanic Monroe community as a place to host festivals and host other cultural events. Fast forward 30-plus years, fast forward 30 or so years, the first kind of official appearance of the festival lot concept appeared in the 2008 Downtown Master Plan as some sort of flexible public space that could accommodate multiple functions throughout the year, such as public restrooms, a community gathering space, and public parking. Go ahead to the next slide. So with the 2008 Downtown Master Plan, the plan doesn't specifically articulate what the festival lot will look like and what amenities will be featured in the festival lot, rather just features a kind of overview of what the festival lot could be. I'm not going to read out everything that the Downtown Master Plan says about the festival lot, but I will point out just one quote that kind of contextualizes our conversation today. It states that "in a community the size of Monroe, it is sometimes difficult to justify allocating dedicated large tracts of land for outdoor public space when the demands on its use vary substantially throughout the year. The creative means of addressing this problem is design a space to have multiple functions. This type of flexible space is termed a festival lot. A festival lot can promote multiple uses in a flexible public space." So that is kind of the contextualized definition from the 2008 Downtown Master Plan. Obviously, the Downtown Master Plan was created almost 20 years ago, and we understand that visions for things and definitions for things can change, but that is kind of the definition we currently have for what the festival lot looks like in our city planning. Next slide. So this is all recent background that you know. In December 2023, the city of Monroe completed the purchase of two adjacent properties totaling about one and a half acres that we intended to eventually use as a future site for that festival lot concept that we originated all the way back in 2008. Perfect. And that brings us into our goals for the property and what we are looking at. So there are a variety of short and long-term goals for creating a festival lot. Some of the longer-term goals include using the site as a magnet to bring people downtown to shop and dine, creating more activity downtown, providing parking for downtown visitors, and providing public restrooms for downtown visitors. On kind of the shorter end, some of the shorter-term goals to make sure that while we are still developing the concepts and actually constructing what the future festival lot will look like, some of those goals include activating the former Union Bank building to prevent the structure from deteriorating during, due to lack of use, demolishing the former chiropractor's office, creating short-term improvements to maintain momentum to eventually achieve that long-term vision, and then also avoid creating any expectations that are inconsistent with what the community ambitions for this festival lot property. So with that, I think I will hand it back over to Patrick.
Great. Actually, I think we could probably, initially, I thought maybe it would make more sense, Clerk Wykoff, to have it bigger, but it's not fitting in the, in the window. So we'll just go back, I think, to where you had it before, especially since there are going to be some graphics. So if you all remember, in March, we met and we presented some more far-reaching alternatives, and council came together with clear direction to focus on only options that would get us the festival lot concept. So we've worked with our consultant to come up with four different concepts, and we'll present those this evening. And they do, in fact, represent what I call kind of a continuum of sort of more, excuse me, less investment, less change to more investment and more change. This, we'll also present some illustrative imagery that sort of shows you different kinds of festival lot or public plaza configurations, and then also some images of features, amenities, and functionalities that could be included in the festival lot. The next slide, please. So again, oops, yeah, that was the right one. Just some different images from around the country, basically, of different kinds of festival lots. I know those are small, but you probably saw them in your packet, but different kinds of things that include market stalls, include play areas, include festival lighting, some landscaping, parking on the edges, some green space as well as the hard space, gathering space for activities. Next slide. And again, you know, here's some examples that focus a little bit on some covered spaces where people can maybe be dining outdoors but also be partly underneath, or you see the top right one has some examples of some little kiosks or booths that could be for vendors. So there's some other, some other options. And the next slide. So the four options that we will be presenting this evening are summarized very briefly in this table, and again, that's in your packet, and if you want, we can look at this longer or come back to it, but you'll see again that they range from less change and less investment to full change, and we'll go through those individually. You'll also see approximate costs of the bottom row ranging from approximately 850 to a million, up to a couple million plus for these different options. So we could put a pin on this and come back to it if you'd like, but let's just move into the individual options now then. the individual options now then. So, so option one, it, again, our sort of lease, least amount of, uh, initial money and probably the least change is to renovate the existing Union Bank building, um, in a more robust way to meet our expectations for, uh, visitor center, pop-up retail space, restrooms, maybe public gathering space, you know, make full use of that building. And then demolish, of course, the chiropractor's building behind, which would allow some space for a little bit more parking, possibly the EV stalls we've, uh, heard about before. There would be room to have a small, uh, dedicated plaza area, as you can see in the, in the, um, illustration, and then the parking area would remain pretty much the same. Uh, so in this, uh, option, you see twenty-five parking spaces in the main parking area and then about four or six, I think in this one, it's four EV stalls. Of course, the parking area then could be vacated at any time to allow for gatherings, events, festivals, et cetera. So that's option one. Move to the next one. Uh, option two is to, again, renovate the existing building pretty much in the same way I mentioned, again, demolishing the chiropractor building, adding spaces at the back off the alley for EV if we wished, but in this, uh, option, we would take the, um, initial, or, excuse me, the most proximate, the nearest, uh, pro- parking area there just immediately west of, of the bank building, the former bank building, and turn that into more dedicated plaza area in conjunction with the, uh, kind of plaza areas that wrap the building. So there would be a more dedicated all-the-time plaza. And then the parking further west from that would be consolidated and reconfigured, um, such that actually there's almost no loss in parking, because I think you, you may remember that leaving the parking alone, the total's about twenty-five spaces, but in this reconfigured approach, we can get twenty-four spaces plus the spaces off the alley. So it really doesn't lose parking and it has a dedicated, um, kind of all-the-time plaza. And again, the parking area can be, uh, vacated for events, uh, things when needed. So now, option three, uh, is, now, option three is where we look at our, our grander vision of having, um, more plaza, more dedicated festival lot, and it's basically scrapes the site, demolishes all structures and the parking on the site starts over. You'll see the reintroduction of, uh, appropriately-sized retail, we're calling it retail, but, um, building anyway, that could house, uh, the visitor center, some pop-up retail, again, restrooms and for me, um, public meeting space, et cetera. And then a plaza, uh, dedicated plaza area in front of it. In this particular configuration, the plaza's on the sunny side of the building, which is nice, and it's dedicated there in the triangular area, which is not so useful for parking. Then immediately to the west, you see an area that would be parking, but would be paved and treated in slightly more special ways so that it looks more like a natural continuation of the plaza, again, being the obvious place we would vacate for, uh, gatherings and festivals. And then, again, parking, um, more dedicated parking to west of that, which also, of course, can be vacated for festivals. In this case, you actually have thirty-five parking spaces, so it would be even more, uh, than the, uh, other options. And then, option four, is sort of foregoing the dual concept of parking slash public space and making it all, mostly all, a parking, excuse me, a festival lot. And so you see, we're calling this sort of the town square option with the building for the retail, the visitor center, restrooms and meeting area, uh, on the west end with a covered space, uh, you can see that kind of hatch line showing the concept of covered, kind of awning type coming off of the building. I mean, again, this is not a design, but it's a concept. Room for some vendor stalls, as you see the little X's and the squares there, room for a playground or stage, um, and then there would be a line of parking, uh, off the alley, and I think in this, uh, case, it's about fifteen spaces. So there would be some parking, but it's certainly not the full parking agenda that we've seen in the other options, but this is the full festival lot, uh, option. So now you've seen the four options in plan, and now what we'll do in the next slides is show you kind of bird's eye view of this, because sometimes it's easier to, um, envision. So there again, that's the current situation you see with the bank, the, the chiropractor building and the parking to the west. Option one, in the next slide, we'll show you, um, how that would look in bird's eye view. Again, the building, of course, is the same, but renovated. The, uh, chiropractor building is gone, but now you see a little bit of space for parking and a little bit of a small, uh, plaza area and then the parking behind. Now, option two, we will see, um, similarly, this is the building stays, a little bit of parking, excuse me, a little bit of plaza immediately to kind of the northeast, parking behind off the alley, but then you see the more dedicated plaza space to the immediate west and then the parking to the west of that. And then lastly, um, not lastly, excuse me, next, option three is the, um, new dedicated plaza, new building and parking area as, uh, as you see here with the plaza in front, again, kind of on the sunny side of the building. The area again, that's immediately to the west of the dedicated plaza is a more, uh, specially-treated part of the parking area so that it's the, the obvious area you would extend into for certain gatherings of certain size, but then allow for all the parking area to be extended into for gatherings if needed. And then lastly, this time correctly, option four, the whole site being the town square, uh, with the building, um, possibly, probably on the west side, you see some covered space, you see playground and/or stage area, you see some parking off the alley. So those are the, uh, representations of our concepts. One thing I want to say, um, you know, I, I know I've said it before and I'll repeat it probably even twice this evening, while there are design elements presented in these illustrations, these are concepts, these are not designs, these are concept placeholders that we want to present to the, to the public so that we can get responses, uh, preferences, ideas, suggestions, just kind of get the juices flowing from the public in order to come back to you and then start to formulate your preferences for our community for what we should do for our festival lot. But these are not designs. Um, next slide, um. Well, these are, again, uh, examples of the kinds of amenities and features that can be in urban plazas, and we will include in our public engagement process sort of vision boards with these kinds of features and allow through some mechanism, you know, it could be just the old-fashioned dot voting, allow folks to put their preferences on these, uh, images so we know what kinds of things people want to see in an urban plaza or town square. And there's outdoor stages, here's some examples of, uh, smaller ones that sort of make sense for the kind of space we're talking about. Uh, the next one has the water features of various kinds, the playful kind to the more formal kind, uh, there's some options here. Kiosks, again, from the more formal kind of French style there on the left to a more northwest-type look on the, on the right. Movable ta- tables and chairs are always very popular, uh, people like to be able to sit kind of where and when and how they want to and not in structured, uh, benches, benches usually. And then outdoor cafe space, which I think we all certainly understand, there's just some examples of how that fits in, in smaller. Um, one thing that's important to remember regarding public plazas is the downtown public plaza is not the same as a neighborhood green space park. It does require a higher level of programming, activation and maintenance, especially for year-round and all-weather use. So there's some examples of the kinds of things that could happen in the space, uh, like Tai Chi Tuesdays, yoga group exercise, kids events, dogs events, food truck Fridays, movie nights in the summer, holiday markets, flower market, holiday tree lighting, Saturday evening dance classes or dancing, I mean, and many, many more things. It's just important to remember that in moving forward with this kind of investment, there will also have to be some continuing investment in programming and activating a space so that it stays safe and attractive and welcoming, uh, all year round. Uh, next slide. This is just, I'm not going to even read anything on here, other than the fact that this is a wheel of interesting, um, uh, characteristics that make a great, uh, place. This is offered by the Project for Public Spaces, which is a nonprofit, national nonprofit, and, um, you can access that, I think I gave the link in the packet, but it just basically breaks down these four basic factors of sociability, uses and activities, access and linkages and comfort and, and comfort and image, and so those are interesting things to just kind of look at and be mindful of about downtown public spaces. Next, I think we go to public engagement, so I'll let, uh, Liam take over for a little bit.
Yeah, so as Patrick mentioned, really the end goal and the entire reasoning for this presentation is city staff want to go out to get public engagement and public comments on these proposed concepts and what kind of amenities we want to see on the festival lot properties. So that way, when we eventually do move into that more design stage and eventually construction stage, you have good input from the public on what they want to see happen with that property. So city staff are looking at, um, over the summer, uh, engaging in a public engagement process, which would include the presentation of these preliminary concepts, including the site plans, the cost estimates, um, the illustrations and then rough, uh, development timeframes, and then also an array of those kind of amenities that Patrick portrayed and more features and functionalities, um, that the public might want to see on those properties. All of that input and preferences will be synthesized into a report and then presented back to council for your further, uh, consideration, and then also to give staff kind of direction on what direction you want to go moving forward with this, um, with this project. The public engagement process will feature, um, I think you might be able to move to the next slide. Perfect, yeah. The public engagement process will, um, feature a number of avenues to try to get as much of the public's input as possible. We are aiming to have two open houses held on-site at the Union, old Union Bank building, um, at differing times. That way, hopefully that will help get the juices flowing with visualizing what kind of amenities and features and concepts are going to be there. We'll also hold an info booth at the farmer's market to get passer buyers to help answer questions and form out questionnaires. We're also in the process of creating a dedicated webpage with those concepts and also directing them to all the avenues they can take to engage in this process, and then also creating an online survey as kind of the catch-all that you can openly send out to the public and anybody can fill out on their computers or phones to provide their comments virtually. And then, of course, we will also publish via social media platforms, um, the city's website, Monroe This Week, uh, the business newsletter and any other platforms we can find to be able to get as much public input from the Monroe community as possible. Staff intends this public engagement process, um, to commence two weeks after council gives us direction to engage in this process, and we estimate that it will take about six weeks to gather all of that data and then potentially a couple more weeks to synthesize all that data and bring it back for review. Our ultimate goal is to have this hopefully done by the end of July, so that way we have enough, uh, time to prepare that for council, answer any questions you might have, um, and then also begin preparing for budget adjustments in the fall if we need to make any moving forward. So that is the public engagement process we are looking at, and I will, I believe, hand it back to Patrick.
Yeah, I think we need to skip ahead a couple, well, I think we had a question, uh, in the committee, uh, because we were at the P three committee on the twenty-second of April about the, uh, money gets from budget this year for this project, and this is just a breakdown of the seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, ten thousand dollars is actually, uh, covering the process now with our designer and expenses for the public engagement process. Thirty thousand dollars, um, actually, I just said this backwards, ten thousand dollars is short-term improvements to the property, which we've made already, so that we can open the doors and allow someone to use the building, uh, uh, in the short term. Thirty thousand dollars to cover the long-range process, vision process that we're doing now, and then another thirty-five thousand dollars for, uh, the next level of site improvements, which would be such things as, um, demolishing the, the chiropractor building, uh, demolishing or taking out the former ATM structure and re, um, kind of re-improving the pavement around that demolition and other, uh, site improvements. And next slide, um. So the next steps, well, phase one is concluding tonight because this is the presentation to you all, and you'll can see, you can see what we've done up to now, I think you, you knew that, but we did go to the P three committee after last time we saw you. And then the next slide, uh. Phase two, so that's this evening, uh, starting this evening, excuse me, um, so, oops, just phase two, yeah. Um, so, uh, with council direction this evening, we can finalize the festival lot concept options, uh, with site plans and illustrations that you saw, in case there's any tweaks or changes we want to make and then to use in our public engagement process. Again, as Liam just said, we think that once we get started in the next couple of weeks, that public engagement process will likely take, uh, four to six weeks. Here, you'll see in italics there that it is important for us to conclude the public process in July. Uh, this will allow, uh, staff time to, uh, compile and analyze the input, then get back to, um, parks board, EDAB, planning commission, and then, uh, back to city council, of course, uh, still in, uh, late summer, um, in order to allow you time to consider the possibility, uh, if you want to move forward of inserting money in the twenty-twenty-six, uh, portion of our biennial budget, uh, if you'd like to proceed further with this project, and the next step would be development. And we want to make sure that you have the information in a timely way to be able to do that and dovetail with the budgetary process. Next slide, um, I kind of actually skipped into it, I'm sorry, that's mostly what I just said. So we will analyze the input and move forward, and I, I don't even probably need to say most of that, because I think I just conflated phase two and three in my, my verbal comments, but it's there in writing if you want to refer back to it. And I think with that, I'll, uh, obviously offer the floor back to the mayor for him to, uh, allow you to, um, offer, uh, questions to us and then, uh, your comments and direction.
All right, thank you very much. Turning to the council, are there, uh, any questions, are there any comments, or are you okay with the group proceeding? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
I had, uh, an inquiry from patrons about a, uh, a water feature where kids frolic in a big fountain-type thing, like you saw a picture of here. Will they have an opportunity to, uh, put that input, I presume, at the, uh, public get-togethers?
Yes, they will.
Exactly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Um, is there, I assume there's a pressing need to demo the chiropractor building, so like an attractive nuisance situation?
That's what we've been told by facilities folks, that it's, uh, not a very structurally sound building and with some level of folks that occasionally may, you know, do damage to things in the public at nighttime, it's good to take away that attractive nuisance.
Um, the, some of the council did a visit to the, um, building before today's meeting, and, uh, I personally would favor, uh, doing the improvements to get the site, I guess, in a, in a better state potentially to have a tenant in the building, um, being that this process seemingly, no matter what we, way we go, will probably be, uh, take a, a year, um, before there's consensus on what the festival lot will look like in the future. Honestly, I, I would more be in favor of, um, waiting on the, uh, feedback gathering just because I think that the, um, concepts that we currently have might give, um, the community the impression that those are the options. I mean, obviously, we'll, we'll take efforts to go, these are just concepts, um, but I think that there's a lot still out there that even we as a, as a council could, um, look at or discover, uh, that might be good options for this. I mean, I don't know if there's a rush, if anything, time is on our side in terms of, um, the potential for interest rates to go down. I, I guess just personally wrapping that all up, I'm more in favor of improving the site in its current condition, um, to get it ready for a, a tenant in the meantime, and maybe holding off on putting all the money into feedback gathering on the current concepts, um, because to do so is, I don't know, for us to give the impression that basically we're, um, uh, those might be the only options. And again, I know that there will be efforts otherwise, however, I just think that we can, we can think more on it. Yeah. Thank you.
Can I offer one, one personal?
Administrator Nate's going to go ahead and respond. Thank you, Patrick.
Okay.
I would say that the one timing issue that we are conscientious of is that the Recreation and Conservation Office grant cycle and state grant cycles start in the even-number year, so that would be in two thousand and six. And so what we're hoping to have is some, some cost-level estimates, so we can begin figuring out how we might finance the project and take advantage of those grant opportunities, uh, next year. Those awards would happen in twenty-twenty-seven during the legislative session during their budget cycle, but the grant applications are due in the even-numbered years.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah, I just, oh, I'm sorry, I had one minor comment, if that's okay.
Go ahead and.
There was a question embedded in Councilmember Walker's, uh, comments about, um, what improvements we could do right away in order to get someone in there, and actually, uh, we have been making some improvements to, uh, the building and, uh, windows, doors, handrails and some interior, uh, things and related to the restroom as well. So actually, very soon, the building will be kind of turnkey-ready, um, for sort of an interim tenant, um, and we have been talking to the chamber, it's not concluded, those, those negotiations are not concluded, but we have been talking about, um, interim use. So, uh, it's, we still hold out hope that soon there may be, in fact, um, out hope that soon there may be, in fact, a new use for that building, kind of on an interim basis, as we look ahead to the longer-term use of the, that building, if we keep it and the whole site.
Thank you. Turning to the council, any other questions about the community outreach plan? Councilmember Gamble had his flag up, and then Councilmember Beaumont.
Yeah, I, I actually like us moving forward. I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, we kind of have a history of wanting to get the community involved. I mean, I think of a lot of different projects that we've, we've sought out the, whether it's turf fields or master park plan, or, you know, that sort of thing. I, I like that concept. I too wanted to, to move forward, and what I see in us giving direction tonight is that we're, we're executing on a lot of the things that you want to accomplish. I, you know, I agree, like, the, the funding is there even, you know, now, like, hey, we move forward, the, of improving it so we can activate the facility, there's the $35,000 or whatever it was for the improvements, but that may, you know, maybe that's allocated toward tearing down, I'm all for that, it doesn't matter what option you look at here, or one that we don't, haven't even come up with, right? That's got to come down, that building's got to come down, so that makes a lot, that makes a lot of sense. But I really don't see a reason why we wouldn't want to engage the community, and a lot of it also being tied to the grant, you know, process. It's good to have, we're going to be submitting anyway, I mean, it's, we're going to be going after that money, and I would much rather have in my pocket the feedback from the community in that process, even though they, you know, you brought up a couple issues, I think we, we want their feedback regardless, so that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. We do get a lot of questions about this purchase, and I think with new city hall being built, and I'm always trying to think, what does the community think, what are people wanting to know? And I, I really think it's, it's important to move forward on this for a variety of reasons. First of all, we've got our new city hall opening, and some community members may be thinking, well, that's great, we know that they're doing good, good things for all of us, but what about us? And I, I love this idea of taking this out to the community and saying, what do you think, what do you want, what do you see here? And I think there is a way, Councilmember Walker, to present these ideas as simply ideas, and not, these are the three things that you're choosing. There's a way to do that, and be thoughtful about it, and still get the feedback. I like the idea of demoing the chiropractic office, I think that that is kind of an eyesore, and maybe drawing some attention that we don't want down there, so I, I get that, but I agree with Councilmember Gamble that let's move forward, let's listen to the community and ask them what they want there, and move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any objection to us moving forward then? Councilmember Walker?
I just wanted to change my tune, in case there's a vote, change my tune.
There's no motion is made, or unless you object.
Thank you, Administrator Knight, for bringing up the, the grant point, and then thank you, Councilmember Gamble and Beaumont, happy to sit up here with folks as well-reasoned as yourself, so I completely agree with taking it out to the public first. And I, I would ask for the emphasis on these are just concepts, and also potentially between now and whenever, I think it'd be really cool for some of the council members to go out and see other sites in the area, or at least see them on presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any objection to moving forward as staff has laid out? Councilmember Hanford?
No objection, but I did want to say that, thank you, Mayor, I, I loved the open houses at the bank idea for the community, I think that's really great, to hold them there, to let them get a visual for the, the property, the building and all that. I was wondering, does the alley have to stay open, like, what's the, what's our parameters around the alley moving forward?
I do have a response, if that's okay. The, the development code actually not only seeks, would see the alley stay open to serve the other properties that it serves, but actually widened on our side by another four feet, so the, the downtown development regulations actually really value the presence of alleys to get some of the things like garbage pickup and some storage and, and secondary access off of Main Street, so I'm, I'm pretty sure that's a pretty, you know, in-concrete kind of thing for our downtown.
Great, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I'm going to go ahead and just, just add that we're going to, we'll bring back at some point a conversation about interim site things that need to occur with the, the facility, so I know that that's been brought up a couple of times here tonight, my focus has been sort of on the community outreach part, but we will be bringing back some conversation about the old chiropractor, practical buildings, security on the site, improvements need to be made internal to the structure while we're waiting to do this community outreach process, get our grants, do the design and all that other stuff.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, any other questions? Okay, and there's no objection to us proceeding with the community outreach? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward with that. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item 8.1, this is introduction, proposed accessory dwelling unit and permit processing code amendments with Senior Planner Amy Wright. Good evening.
I'm going to be running my own presentation, so just a moment. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am going to be presenting to you an introduction of accessory dwelling unit and permit processing code amendments. This is a part of a package of housing-related code amendments that are required by the state. You may have seen some already, but a lot of them are coming up very soon. So just an overview of this presentation, I'm going to talk about what ADUs are, the current policy in Monroe, some guidance that's happened over the last 10 to 15 years, specifically House Bill 1337, and what that means for us, some considerations, I've done some projections, and just some other recommendations that we could follow in the future. So what are ADUs? ADUs are small residences that share a lot with the primary dwelling unit. They can be contained within a home, so that could be in an attic or a basement, they can be attached to the side of a home, or they can be detached. Some benefits of ADUs, it helps promote multi-generational living, they're a good option for small families, they can provide financial support for the homeowner, they can raise property values, and they also increase housing stock and housing diversity in the city. So currently, if you are wanting an ADU in Monroe, you will first come into the planning department and you will apply for land use permit. It's a type-two permit, and that means that it has a little bit more touch, it goes, you'll go, the city will send out mailers to the neighbors, so it, it just goes a little bit further than just a, a normal permit. We allow one attached or detached ADU, and the size limit is either 800 square feet or 40% of the primary dwelling unit, whichever is less. So if you have a 2,000, or if you have a thousand-square-foot home, then you could only have a 400-square-foot ADU. You're allowed one ADU in new property. And the, we have a lot of design requirements, it has to be incidental, subordinate to the primary dwelling unit, the entrance has to be off to the side, and then also that you needed one additional parking stall, and the owner is required to sign a covenant and an affidavit recorded against the property that they will reside in one of the units, and any future landowner will reside in one of the units. So this is some data from the city, these are approved ADUs each year. You can tell we don't get a lot of ADU permits, on average, we get, it's just shy of one per year. What we are not seeing, what I don't have on here, is one was just approved in January of this year, so there'll be one more added to this list. Some more ADU data, mostly ADUs are permitted in the R4 zone, as you heard earlier, you know, R4 would be going away, so 55% currently in R4, 22% of them happen in R7, and about 22% in R15. We have received 11 applications in the last 10 years, and nine of them have been approved. The two that weren't approved, both the applicants withdrew their applications, some of it had to do with those restrictions we had over location, or just the cost of building them. Most of the, the ADUs we receive are detached ADUs versus attached. There's been a lot of guidance, like I mentioned, over the last 10 to 15 years, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that. The recent, regional housing strategy, they, this document talks about wanting to allow more housing choices within our communities and our single-family zoning district, and that are less costly for ownership. And also, Vision 2050 talks a lot about providing additional housing types and giving more of a, a housing supply for lower-income or moderate-income families. This is the implementation plan from the City of Monroe's Housing Action Plan, so you can see we've been talking about ADUs for a while. The, the first red line that you see there talks about streamlining the ADU process, and it looks like we set that as a high priority. The second red line talks about promoting ADUs, and that's also a high priority. In yellow, it talks about amending the current ADU code, and that's what we're here talking about today, and then in green, it talks about fast-tracking ADUs by offering pre-approved plans to homeowners. So House Bill 1337 was adopted by the state in June of 2023, and its intent was to ease the barriers for construction of accessory dwelling units. House Bill 1337 says that all jurisdictions are required to adopt the minimum standards by six months from the adoption of our comprehensive plan, so that gives us until the end of June to adopt the minimum standards. If we don't adopt, then the state law will supersede our code, the minimum standards would apply. So one of the changes is that we will need to update our definitions to align with those in House Bill 1337 of what an accessory dwelling unit is. It says that we must allow ADUs in all zones where single-family dwelling units are permitted. We already do that, so that's good, no change needed there. It also says that we must, we must allow up to two accessory dwelling units per lot in single-family zones, so that can be attached, detached, or a combination of the two. So we'll need to make a change there, since we only allow one. The minimum ADU size standard, 1337 says that we cannot require that they be smaller than 1,000 square feet. So currently, we, we cap them at 800 square feet or 40% of the primary dwelling unit, so we went to Planning Commission, and we came up with limiting them at 1,000 square feet, or 50% of the primary dwelling unit square footage, whichever is greater. And the purpose of this was sometimes you have a two-story dwelling unit and you want to convert your full basement into an accessory dwelling unit, it just makes more sense to have it be at 50% instead of 40%. That's what Planning Commission has recommended. I had mentioned earlier that we have a requirement for where the primary entrance needs to be, and so that needs to go away with, with their new requirement, so the entrance of an ADU could be anywhere where a, a primary dwelling unit entrance could be. The next one is setbacks, so we, we have to allow accessory dwelling units to be located on a lot line if it is adjacent to an alleyway, unless we routinely plow the alleyway for snow, we don't currently plow alleyways, but, just throw that little tidbit in there. And also, if there's an existing structure, we've actually run into this before, if there's an existing structure that was constructed within the setbacks in the past, we would have to allow them to convert that structure to an accessory dwelling unit. That doesn't mean that they don't need to meet fire safety code, but we did have an accessory dwelling unit in like the old, old town area where they wanted to convert, but we wouldn't let them convert a portion of the structure that was within the setback, so this, this would allow them to do that. The owner occupancy requirement must be removed, and so we, we don't, we can no longer require that an owner reside on the property. So ultimately, somebody could own a primary dwelling unit and two accessory dwelling units and rent all three of them out if they choose. Street improvements, we cannot require somebody constructing an ADU to, to have street, to make street improvements, we don't, we don't do that, so no change is needed. This is the bigger one, we cannot prohibit the sale or conveyance of a condominium unit independently from a principal unit. The City of Monroe does not control or prohibit condominium sales, it is a process done through the State of Washington, so we will continue to not do that, but I just, just to be aware, somebody could have a primary dwelling unit, construct two accessory dwelling units, condominiumize them and sell them. So House Bill 1337 says that we cannot, that, that we still can require one additional parking stall per accessory dwelling unit, unless they are located within a half a mile of a major transit stop. We don't have any major transit stops in the city, and staff and Planning Commission recommend that we continue to require one additional stall per unit. This, this long topic here talks about, again, about the aesthetics and us requiring that an ADU be subordinate to a primary dwelling unit, and so, and the location of where ADU can be located, and so we will need to make changes here to not have that restriction. So ult, ultimately, what House Bill 1337 is getting at is any requirement that you have for a primary dwelling unit, it would be the same for an accessory dwelling unit, you wouldn't have higher restrictions for the ADU. Similar with height limitations, we can't, we can't make different height requirements for an ADU than a primary dwelling unit. Impact fees, this is not a part of this proposal, but I, I wanted to let it be known that within House Bill 1337, we are not allowed to impose more than 50% of the impact fees that are assessed for a principal dwelling unit. This is a topic that will be coming forward, I believe, next week at council, but it is, to be clear, it is not something that we're considering a part of these code amendments.
Councilmember Gamble?
This is the one I had a question on, because when I read in the packet, it specifically said that...
Councilmember Gamble, oh, thanks.
It had specifically said that the public work staff are working through a separate but coordinated proposal to amend connection charges and impact fees that are consistent with this requirement. Very familiar with our ADU code, and part of the reason why we didn't have ADUs, or we had a rampant amount of ADUs that were, we had several, about a half a dozen or so, if I'm not mistaken, that... that they didn't get permits or whatever, is because of our, in just ungodly impact fees. And, you know, specifically, it was around the sewer side of the equation where we were charging a full sewer hookup when, you know, in an ADU typically, you're using your existing connection, and we already charged for consumption. So I just wanted to make sure, I put it like, because we, as a council back in 2015, I want to say, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin was on there. I know we have another council member that's in the audience that was, we specifically reviewed that one. So I just want to make sure, when I saw and read that we were reviewing that again, that that, that was one, because that fee ended up being in excess of over $17,000 in order to build an ADU, even if you were going to do it in your home. You know, within the confines of your home, it was a $17,000 permit. So, and $12,000 of that was associated just to the sewer. So just wanted to call that out and make sure that, because the way I read it in the packet is that we were considering, oh, hey, it's limited to 50%. So I, you know, I for one, if something comes forward and it's a $6,000 sewer thing, it just makes no sense to me on something that's already a connection that we're going to be charging for the increased, because we meter it, right? So anyway, my two cents before it comes back. You knew I was going to say something.
I did, I know.
Thank you, Councilmember Gimble.
Yes, thank you. So yes, this will be coming forward from the Public Works and Parks Department. I'll be there as well to answer any questions over this specific topic. I believe they're also bringing forward connections. Right now, we don't allow an additional connection for an ADU. You were required to connect to the primary dwelling unit. And so is that, is that sensible when you're condoing? So a topic that may be coming forward also with the impact fees. I don't have a slide for this topic, but I wanted to discuss it because it was brought up in, in previous conversations relating to homeowners associations and their CCNRs. So the City of Monroe, when we, when we process a subdivision, we review CCNRs, their very first set of CCNRs. And at that time, any future CCNRs that we review, we will make sure that it doesn't prohibit, it doesn't go against the requirements of House Bill 1337. So any new subdivisions would be allowed to have two ADUs and, and follow all of the other items I talked about. However, current CCNRs may continue to prohibit accessory dwelling units. So it's not requiring current subdivisions to make that change. So just talking, just going back to the graphic I had earlier, the current code is on the, I know it's a little bit small, on the left, and the, and the proposed code is on the right. So now, what we're proposing is that if you, if you want to get a new accessory dwelling unit or two, you would come to the city, you'd get a land use permit. City staff and Planning Commission recommended moving this to a type-one decision. This would mean that it doesn't go out, your neighbors aren't notified. It actually makes the, there's a lot less noticing. It makes the process a lot quicker, which is a recommendation from Commerce. City staff is reviewing their proposal against the city code. And so at this time, even if a neighbor wanted to make a comment, really, we would still be reviewing and approving an accessory dwelling unit, making sure that it follows the current code. And so that is what that part is about.
Thank you. Councilmember Gimble?
Just one question, on the, the type of unit, a combination of up to two attached or detached greater than 1,000 square feet or 50% of primary residents, that's per ADU, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes. So as Councilmember Gimble said, if you came in and wanted accessory, an accessory dwelling unit would be 1,000 square feet or 50% of the primary residents. You can have two ADUs. You, you don't have any entrance restrictions or design restrictions that we currently have. You will need an additional parking stall per unit, and the owner's no longer required to reside in one of the units.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. So just thank you for your presentation. So just to clarify for the parking additional stalls. So I'm just trying to picture, so a two-car garage, a home with a two-car garage, and they build an ADU, but they don't have any extra room for another parking stall in front of their house. But they do have two, because it's a two-car garage. So how does that all work?
So the primary dwelling unit typically, a, a single-family residence, they're required to have two parking stalls for the primary dwelling unit. And then they would also be required to have an additional stall per accessory dwelling unit. If you have two accessory dwelling units, that would be four total parking stalls. We currently allow you to use your garage space, subsidies don't, for parking. But this is all off-street parking, so nothing on the street.
Okay, so two-car garage, and they can pull two cars in, so they can build two ADUs, and the two-car spots, parking spots behind the garage or behind the cars that pulled into the garage, now they have their adequate parking?
That could work.
Okay. Or they take out part of their front yard and pour cement and make those parking stalls, that's also an option?
Yes, as long as they meet lot coverage requirements. The minimum lot coverage in R7, which will be our, it's 60%, so they're able to cover up to 60%.
Of the lot.
Of the lot.
Got it. Thank you for that. And then just clarifying for the boundaries of, the boundaries are shrinking for how close you can build to the boundary, correct?
How close you can build to the rear lot line if it's adjacent to an alleyway, or if you already have a pre-existing structure that's within a setback, you can, you can now convert that into an accessory dwelling unit.
Correct, and so the setbacks have decreased to?
So the setbacks only decrease if you're adjacent to an alleyway.
Okay.
Or if you have a structure that was already permitted in the past and is, is not meeting current setbacks.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
You always give amazing presentations, so thank you. There was a recent law passed that made it so that parking in front of a person's driveway wasn't prohibited. And that was like weeks ago, so I don't know if you're following that. But if that, if it's not prohibited in that law, if, I guess, permanent parking in front of your driveway isn't prohibited by that law, do you know if the city would count that as a parking spot? I think before, it was like you can temporarily park there to pick someone up, and I, the law might say that now it's acceptable to park there overnight.
I'm not familiar with that, but I do know that our, we, we have off-street parking allocations, so I think that might still be considered on-street, is my guess.
And then just some feedback. Councilmember Fisher and I represent Monroe on the Affordable Housing Alliance Committee, and we heard the other day that the, the conversation right now from the building community at least is that there might be a lot less desire to act on this and start building ADUs everywhere than might be expected initially because of the uncertainty around liability with condos still. So I just thought that was interesting for anyone who might be wondering if this is going to lead to this cascade of all these ADUs. Could be wrong, but, but that felt valuable to know.
Good, thank you. Anything else right now?
Segues into projections. So here's just, I just wanted to give some projections. We're trying to understand what this means for Monroe and how many accessory dwelling units will be constructed here in the next few years. So this is just annualized ADU permits in Washington, and you can see that it really jumped after 2020, and they became a lot more popular. So it's, it's been a little difficult to, to know, you know, what, what we're, what's going to happen here in Monroe, because these, a lot of cities in our area haven't, they just made this change or they haven't quite made it yet. They're, they're trying to get in under that end-of-June deadline. So California has done this well before us, so I just kind of was looking at them, and it looks like they saw about a 12x increase. So if we apply that to our annual average, maybe nine to 10 units a year. Seattle saw a nine times increase, and so seven units. So just really trying to understand what that means. I will say that a lot of people have come into the city wanting to do accessory dwelling units. They, they're pausing, they're waiting for this to pass, or they, some knew about this and some didn't. But we have, we don't, we don't have any active permits in right now because everyone's waiting for this to pass. So Commerce did provide additional recommendations on top of what, what staff is recommending. But we are following some of them. You can see a streamlining the ADU process, permitting process, that is, you know, getting that land use permit in and done quicker by moving it to a type-one permit. They, they recommend having expedited or shorter review process. I, I don't really think that's necessary. I think our, our review time is pretty good with type-one permits. And then also providing pre-approved plans is something that other communities are doing in this area. So there was a webinar on Friday that a few staff members and I went to. It looks like some cities in the area are either banding together to get pre-approved plans, or they're purchasing pre-approved plans. But this isn't a part of this, this, these code amendments. It's just a big topic in ADUs right now, and so I just wanted to bring it up as something we can think about in the future. So I have presented this at CHSAB, at the P3 Committee. We had a public hearing on April 14th in front of Planning Commission. We did receive, we didn't receive any written comments, but we did receive three verbal comments from the community that I just wanted to, to discuss really quick. All three of them, I would, said that they are generally in favor of these code amendments. They would like to see us go further. Two of them have properties either in the multifamily zone or in the mixed-use zone, and they want to see accessory dwelling units allowed there. This is, we don't, we wouldn't allow them in those zones. We don't allow single-family housing in those zones. And so having ADUs there takes away our ability to get the multifamily density that we're looking for in those areas. The third comment was more questions, but it, it did allow us to tweak some, a section that was a little bit confusing and just making it easier for the community to understand over minimum lot sizes. We made those changes. This was sent to Commerce on April 11th. They provided two comments to us. One, it was helpful, we made a good change. And the second one was just reminding us of that we can't go over 50% for impact fees. So tonight, I hope that you, you know, the amendments are available in your packet. I hope you were able to look at them, and if you have any questions or clarification or comments, that would be helpful. And we're hoping to bring this to a public hearing next, next Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, and then Councilmember Beaumont.
Do I read in everything you've said that basically anybody can do one of these as long as they meet the criteria that you're putting forward in this presentation?
As long as it works for their site, as long as they can get these in, and if they're on a single-family lot within the city, they could have up to two.
Okay, and kind of the last picture you showed there, ask, thought of a question on some of these pre-built, I'll call them barns. You see out by McDonald's and Sultan. Some of them would fit this criteria size-wise. Those would be permitted as long as they're, I don't know, set up by city standard of foundation and whatnot?
Yeah, so we don't have a minimum requirement. We only have a maximum requirement. So as long as you meet the building code for, for a living space, then that would be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Beaumont, and then Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Beaumont?
Thank you, Amy. Great presentation. This is a lot to get through. I just want to clarify a couple of things that I thought I read and heard, just making sure I have this correct. Staff is recommending the removal of all owner occupancy requirements.
Staff is recommending that because that's what the state is requiring us.
And can you go over again what we are proposing in terms of notifying neighbors that an ADU is going into their neighborhood?
Yeah, so the proposal is to move it to a type-one, which would remove that, that outreach, that, you know, sending out postcards to neighbors. And really, the reason is, is that it, it is going to streamline the process and make it a lot faster. The intent of House Bill 1337 is to remove the barriers for the construction of ADUs, and so there's just multiple ways of, of getting there. And so that, I will say, we're not required to move it to a type-one. It's a staff recommendation.
I have to say, I disagree with that. We just went through the Strawberry Lane neighbors coming in, and that was on us. But they were very upset, and I think anyone with any type of construction going on in your neighborhood really should be notified by the city that that's happening. I would certainly want to know that. So I would like to state for the record that I disagree with that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, and then Councilmember, you have your hand up, and then Councilmember Walker.
You actually just lead me right off into something. Me and Tammy don't disagree very often, but I think anytime that you are building a home, like I don't get notified if somebody's building a new home next to me. I feel that this is the same kind of thing, so I differ a little bit there. So I'm not against the type, the type-one. I didn't know when I got out of this position that I would spend so much time on ADUs. And Amy, as you know, Ms. Bright, probably better than anybody, is this has become quite an issue in my neighborhood, so which is super fun. But just to clarify a couple of things. So it sounds like, for one, the, the mixed-use neighborhood, they're not allowed, right? Mixed-use commercial, like down along Main Street?
That's correct, and the reason is, is that these are allowed in zones that allow single-family detached dwelling units. So they're accessory to a single-family detached dwelling unit, and single-family detached is not allowed in that zone.
Okay. And that, but there's houses built there, right?
Correct, they're existing, non-conforming.
Okay. So I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but it was one of the questions I thought I would ask. I've got a whole few of them here. And it's probably not going to be in any typical order, so I have to bear kind of with me as I bounce around. Conduing them, I think we were talking about sewer connections, probably having separate boxes for electrical. I think if there's a potential to condo these things, I think that it's probably, and obviously, we're going to get more and more educated about this. It seems like we would charge for that connection. If that can be condoized and sold separately, that that would be something that we would collect fees on. Again, probably not the same amount as a house, right? Of 17,000, I think, that you had, had said it would. So it would, it would somehow be, maybe graduated down according to just the ADU being a smaller unit and not housing as many people. So I would love some more information on that as we go through this, which I'm sure you'll give to us. All residential zoned. So there was a question that came up from someone in the public about the size of a lot going to an R7, limiting the amount of ADUs that we could have on the property. So something along the lines of, with R4, the, the plot was different. It's like 0.11 acres or something, and now with the seven, it's 0.14, so it kind of limits the ability to put ADUs in. Is that, is that something you're familiar with, or can you explain to me a little bit?
What it sounds like to me is if you were to plat an acre, you know, into R7, so... so seven units per acre, then certainly the lot size is smaller. So then what you're going to fit on it is less unless you went up. You still need to get the parking in and meet your lot coverage and setbacks. But it wouldn't going to, if you, you live in R4, you don't, you live in R7. But if you, if you lived in R4 and it moves to R7, it's not going to make a change for you.
Okay.
Because the, because the zoning changed. Other than actually, it gives you more flexibility because R4 only allows 50% lot coverage and R7 allows 60%.
Okay. I'm not against ADUs. I'm just trying to kind of surf through all of this stuff and kind of figure it out. Let's see. Oh, height limits. That's come up in my neighborhood as well. So it, I don't know if there's anything that we can do about it without adjusting our, our height limit for just housing. But if you have, for instance, an example would be a rambler that then puts a 35-foot structure behind it. It's, I wish that we could adjust those a little bit. So you don't, you don't have these 35-foot structures with an ADU at the top of it in the neighborhoods, if that makes sense. It's kind of, I don't know how you guys would feel about that, but I have an example of one if you want to, if you want to see it.
Can you take a comment on that?
I will take a comment, absolutely.
Just on that one?
Yeah.
If I'm reading correctly, that would, in my opinion, would go under, we don't have the ability. Because we currently today have design requirements where it has to, to meet the primary structure. Like what I did, I, I had to hire an architect that would exactly like match the house. And if we're going to do that, then we would be in violation of the state law.
Correct.
Unless, now could we, yeah, we would have to change the height of a house, correct? Because they can't be too different, is what the state said.
Right. So in our bulk requirements, we have maximum height limitations for, for structures. And what it, what we can't do is say accessory dwelling units can be more restrictive than a primary, than, than what we allow for primary dwelling units.
Yes. We'd have to change the primary dwelling.
Correct.
Okay. I assume that staff's probably not interested in doing that. Same finishes as the principal unit? Is that something that we can do?
Correct. So they would still need to meet our design standards that we have in our code for primary dwelling units.
So would like a metal pole-type structure, would that not be permitted then? If the house wasn't metal pole or would it just be the finishes?
It depends. And I don't, I don't know if I have enough information to answer your question completely. Sometimes it depends because we have different design standards, whether you're in, depending on where you are in the city. So we have infill design standards for certain areas or downtown design standards. And then also just our normal design standards, which are in Title 22. So depending on where you're at, which, it depends on which one applies. But specifically, I don't know the answer. I'd have to look it up.
Okay. So if that's something that I think that would be something to look at to make sure that it does, it does kind of match the, the feeling of the neighborhood, at least with the same kind of look as, as the principal unit. Gosh, you know, I think that that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Fisher.
Believe it or not. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
I just want to say, this is, it sounds like one of those laws that I was talking about earlier where the state is saying, here's a new law. We want more housing. Even if you don't do it, we're doing it. With comp plans that I was talking about earlier, it's usually tied to funding risk if you don't comply with it. This one sounds like it might be a little bit softer. But my question was, as it relates to the condo aspect, if I'm a home builder, or sorry, if I am a, if I'm the owner of the home and I want to build one, which my comment earlier about there being less of an appetite because liability, that was just with regard to builders. But if I'm a homeowner and I want to do this, it doesn't have to be condoed when I build it. But if I decide to condo it at some point, does the city have a role to play in that?
The city does not have a role to play. So the homeowner would go to the state of Washington and they would, they do that process through them. I'm not incredibly familiar with it because we just don't, we don't do it here.
Okay. And then with regard to the question about level one or level two, level one being neighbors aren't notified that, that one has been approved. If I understand it correctly, the, the reason that staff is proposing level one is because with level two, the neighbors could be notified of one of these taking place. But these requirements, they are what they are. Like this isn't a subjective thing where a neighbor, I could come forth and be like, I hate that. I don't want that to be built next to my house. It, it wouldn't matter. And again, that seems like it's something from the state. Is that right? That's not the city?
Well, so.
The requirement aspect?
Well, the require, so you're absolutely correct that the, and I'm not surely sure about the, the state part of that, but the type, type one to type two, I think that it kind of gives the neighbors a false sense of hope that they can make a change that, because at the end of the day, city staff needs to follow the code and we review those accessory dwelling units against the code. And if it meets it, then, then it, it would be allowed. This is a conversation that Planning Commission also had a lot of discussion over and they did ultimately recommend that you approve it of them as a type one.
Councilmember Walker, that's my recommendation is a type one. And the reason for it is it's an accessory to a principal use. It, it's like putting in a garage or it's like putting in a deck. And I understand that it's another person or another family that might be living there, but it's an accessory to a principal use. And to, to Amy's point, it provides the expectation with public notice that there's something inherently different about it that might, they may get public comment. And then what are they supposed to do with it? It sets a false expectation with people that these ADUs are somehow going to be treated differently. You still have the floor, Councilmember Walker? I was just going to, that, thank you. I'm glad I asked to clarify that, especially for the public. We want them to know that, or at least I want them to know that in supporting level one, it's not because I don't want the public to know what's going on, but by the state requirement aspect, I meant even if we did level two and they were notified, which agreed, Mary, like if, yeah, why would I get a notification that my neighbor is building a new bathroom or something? Because the requirement would be that we allow these to take place no matter what. So, yeah, you know what I'm saying. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Yeah. And then my two cents, having gone through the process, all it did is add time. I, I will say ADU is a godsend. I mean, for, for our family personally, I mean, for those that don't know the story. I mean, my mom, Alzheimer's dementia, we had to put her in full-time care. My father needed a place to live and I don't know if you've checked how much it costs for full-time care for someone with Alzheimer's dementia. The only way we could make that happen as a family is we created a multi-generational living situation with the ADU process. And having to pull a type two permit, all that dad did is just add to, you know, time to the processes. We were, you know, halfway in crisis mode, trying to, trying to figure all this thing, you know, this thing out. And during that timeframe, we had a lot of stuff that was on the books that was just ridiculous. I will speak to the sewer thing. My question to you would be, is that if we had a developer come in or somebody that was going to build a multi, you know, unit or condos or a couple stories, are we going to require them to have a sewer, an individual sewer per unit? Or is it going to connect somewhere and then we're going to meter it? Right? Isn't that correct? Do we require, if you're going to be a multi, multi, if it was a condo unit that we were going to put in or an apartment complex, do they have to have an individual hookup or is it going to be a joint hookup that is going to be metered per unit?
We can certainly get back to them next week.
Yes, we can get back to you on that. I, I saw you looking over my shoulder. So I, I can't speak to that. I don't know. But we can get back to you. And I think, yes, and I, Public Works will be presenting next week.
Because the one thing we wouldn't want to do, because I hear the desire of saying, well, you know, we got to make sure and get in front of this, you know. One, that could deter someone from being able to resolve a situation like I had, right? And we have no intentions to turning it into a, you know, that's not even a, a thought process. But if that created a situation where now I've got to pay, you know, a full, now I know we're talking about that would be reduced, but even that, I mean, you're going to be paying on an ADU at a minimum, just all the costs, six to $7,000. You should throw an additional 12 or an additional six, so you cut it in half for that, for that sewer. That's significant. And in a lot of these instances, we're trying to, we're, you know, we've got, we've got housing issues and generational issues. And so I would not be at all for that. I would be all for, from the standpoint of that, okay, yeah, well, then we probably should make sure that we can meter them separately. I will tell you that like on the ADU we did, there is separate metering from an electrical perspective, all that type of stuff there on, is separate. But I would, and the other aspect is, is just from a pure constru, I'm a construction guy. You guys know that. I mean, I, I wouldn't want a bunch of infrastr, you know, building in a separate line, especially if you had several. It just doesn't make sense. My personal opinion.
Thank you.
And then, let's see, the design requirements piece, I just want to make sure I understood. Because what you were talking about, I thought that's exactly what's not permitted to do, is to say, hey, it has to look, we need it to look a certain way, the, the ADU. Did I, did I miss that? Because I, in the packet, what I was reading was that that would be changing.
What, what House Bill 1337 says is we can't have any code that would make it, make it more restrictive than the primary dwelling unit.
More restrictive. Can we make it look like the primary?
We likely would, but to answer this question specifically, I'd need to look at our different design standards to get the, a correct answer. And just to speak, if, if it's okay, just to, just for any clarification, the code amendments before, and I think you know this, the code amendments before you do not discuss impact fees, nor does it discuss utility connections. And I just, and that, that is coming forward, but so what we're looking at doesn't discuss those items.
Yeah. We adjusted it so that it was, it was specific to the single-family, you know, because it was a single-family dwelling that once you paid it once, those impact fees, because that was the adjustment that we made when we discussed this back in 2015. So that's why it wasn't called as, because you're a single-family, you know, dwelling unit. You pay the one-time connection, you pay that, you put an ADU on, you've already, you're still a single, you don't reclassify into a multi-dwelling, you're, it's a, it's a single-family dwelling from a zoning side of the thing. So, okay, sorry.
It's okay. I think one thing for everybody to think about is what is the name of this dwelling unit again? What's the first word?
Accessory.
It's an accessory. That's right. So it becomes something different when it subdivides, like a short plat, it becomes a principal. Same thing when you go, when you condominiumize something. That's when you get into this weird question of it's no longer an accessory, now it's a principal. And so I think that's something that when we're talking about billing and we're talking about what the structure is, this is an accessory to a principal use. The principal use is a detached residential unit, you know, a house. This is an accessory. So it is subservient to a principal use. And that's, I think, something to remember as you're having the conversation next week then, about whether there's one water meter, two water meters, et cetera, is that this is supposed to be an accessory use. It's not supposed to be something that is a principal use. It's an accessory to a principal use. Okay? So something to think about over the next week. Again, this is not the primary thing that we're talking about today. And, but it is something that we've touched on because they are related issues. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Help me understand the no-owner requirement. Is that coming from the state or is that coming from us?
So currently, we have this restriction, not all cities do, that require, that we're requiring that the owner lives on-site. And also, they are, they're saying that every future owner will live on-site. So that's something extra that we have in our code and the state is saying you can't have that. So we need to remove it. So that's what the proposal is, is to remove it.
And that's coming from the state?
That's correct.
Okay. To me, that defeats the purpose of what you've just talked. You built the unit for your parents for a reason. So now we're saying you don't have to have it for a family member or something. Now it's just a rental. It's where it amounts to.
That's correct. And that's what the state's requiring of it, us, but yes.
I love that statement.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Caught me eating an almond.
What, I'm going to say it, what joy.
Very good. I just wanted to clarify my earlier statement about noticing. And it was never an attempt to allow people to make changes or to weigh in. It was simply a response to some of the things we dealt with earlier this year with people not being noticed. And that really got to me. And I just feel like, you're right. You could talk to someone in your neighborhood and say, hey, by the way, I'm building an ADU. So I just wanted to clarify, understand that that adds a layer of work for staff and somehow slows the project probably. So I just wanted to clarify my earlier statement. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we were to review the draft amendments, discuss and provide feedback to staff. I did hear some questions. Staff will go ahead and put together responses to those and be prepared to respond to those next week. If you have any other questions that come up over the next couple of days, please feel free to go ahead and email the, me, the city administrator and also Amy so that we can have that information and be prepared for the public hearing that's coming up a week from today. Thank you very much, everybody. And next item on the agenda is, thank you, is new business item number 8.2. And yeah, I do have to say that it's ordinance number 007. 2025 Amending MMC 4.40 Regarding LTAC Rules with Mr. McCorkle.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Council. Once again, I am going to be presenting on ordinance 007, 2025, Amending MMC 4.40 Regarding the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So following the fiscal year 2025 LTAC application cycle, LTAC met on January 23rd to discuss ways to better enhance the process for lodging tax and reviewing lodging tax applications. In the, in the kind of current system that LTAC reviews, application review is largely left to the discretion of each individual LTAC member who may have different processes and priorities when determining how to recommend funding allocation. Each individual member can create their own set of independent criteria and processes for how they want to go about recommending the funding allocations. However, there is currently no formal system in place that LTAC can push forward as the formal set of criteria that all LTAC members should follow in reviewing LTAC applications and that they can showcase to any potential applicant what that criteria is. That is not something that's currently adopted by LTAC or the city council. Most other cities across the state of Washington, or I shouldn't say most, but a, a large majority, do have formal criteria that they advertise when they're giving out applications to ensure consistency among all members of the Lodging Tax Committee when they're reviewing those applications and making recommendations to the city council. The proposed ordinance today is kind of the first step in that process to eventually getting to that kind of more formalized criteria. Because of the protected status of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee in the revised Code of Washington, it is recommended that any proposed set of criteria first be proposed and endorsed by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee before being forwarded to council for final approval, thus giving reason for the entirety of this ordinance that you are looking at tonight. This would require a limited ordinance to allow LTAC to recommend rules governing the committee to the city council. So that brings us to ordinance 007, 2025. And essentially what this proposed ordinance would do is simply allow LTAC the limited authority to recommend rules that are governing their processes. In this case, it is namely going to be recommending a formal set of criteria that will then be passed off to city council to approve. And then that set of criteria could then be utilized for LTAC when they're discussing that criteria and discussing the applications to ensure that there is some sort of formalized consistency among all LTAC members and the review process. I do want to clarify that this ordinance is not formally adopting any set of criteria. This is once again, just the first step in that process to allow LTAC to begin to even discuss recommending a universal set of criteria that they can propose. In this light, this ordinance will allow LTAC to discuss this, but still give council the authority to formally adopt the ending criteria. So that way both bodies get the ability to comment and recommend what they want to see. ability to comment and recommend what they want to see in terms of priority for how lodging tax funds should be utilized by the city. The proposed substantive language in this ordinance has been reviewed and recommended by LTAC at that January 23rd meeting, and with that, I will conclude my remarks.
All right. Thank you. So I turn to the council. Are there any questions or a motion? Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Liam. I get questions about LTAC funds often, from nonprofits in our community, and I think this is a fantastic change, and I'll be happy to be able to tell people there is a metric, there's criteria used. So I am happy to move to accept this first reading ordinance 007, 007/2025, amending Chapter 4.40 MMC Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, authorizing the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to recommend rules governing the committee's consideration of lodging tax revenue proposals to the Monroe City Council, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fisher, for the requested action shown on the screen under new business item 8.2. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Please let the record show that Councilmember Gamble was not in chambers at the time of the vote. Next item on the agenda is, thank you, Liam. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, Councilmember Reports. We'll go ahead and start off with Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I kind of, uh, county, I think, and, uh, waiting for the email, because that was a much greater, um, than I did.
Thank you very much.
I did want to report on, um, our, you know, the, 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 felt like this was the best trip. And...
It's like I'm a rookie or something.
There you go, yeah. And I missed it.
I felt like it was one of the best trips that I've been on, and I've been with different groups, but this was our first city, all-city coordinated trip with Cogent Strategies. And I saw the survey from Liam sent out, thank you for sending that out. And, yeah, just really great trip. It was a good, I would say, just bonding time for those of us that were on the trip as well, even though some of us are already bonded, it's just more bonding. And it was great to, like, I've told people before, like, if they say, like, oh, why do you guys go back there, and do all cities do that? And I thought, you know, the nice thing is, the answer is no, not all cities do that at all. The nice thing is that when we go back there, our senators, our representative, they know us, they're familiar with us, and their staff of them know us, and they're familiar with us, and they remember us. And so it's just kind of cool to look back and know that, seeing the same of the same faces over the years, it's just exciting. And it helps secure that funding that we need as a city, and it can seem like a lot of money that we put in our budget for that, but all it takes is one or two grants that will more than fund that for the next decades to come. And so, and we've seen those, so. And my daughter, who was, paid her own way to go and visit friends and things like that, but she was there, and she said that being around the city staff and the city council just made her enthused and happy to be part of our city, and wanted her, it kind of lit something inside of her to want to be involved with our city and government and things like that. So that was cool. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
Echo a lot of what Councilmember Hanford said. I thought that our meetings with Representative Delbene and the staff of Senator Murray and Senator Cantwell were great. I just want to give special thanks to Representative Delbene. She is so considerate, she's so personal, especially with our city, she makes time to meet with us always, she comes to our events, and it's noticed and it's appreciated. As Councilmember Hanford said, it's cool knowing that when we're talking with them, they're familiar with our issues and they're top of mind, and making sure that they know that when some of these budget reconciliation conversations are happening, the improvements that we're seeking are, hopefully, one of the first things that they think of when talking about improvements needed in their community. I think that's really special. Another one of the meetings that we had this year that was pretty unique was with the Federal Rail Administration Acting Director, and in that meeting, we discussed sort of the unique risks that might come with being in a city that is bifurcated with a rail line, especially one that has cargo come through it that could be hazardous. So to have the Federal Rail Administration's focus as well to talk about our issues, I think, again, very valuable. So special thanks to Liam and Administrator Knight as well for organizing those meetings. I think it has serious potential to yield fruit. So, other things, attended a PSRC Transportation Board meeting, and the community feedback, one of their big surveys came back that people are, one of their top issues is the maintenance of roads, which I think was a high, a recent high, so that might be a regional focus in the coming years, which may be happy. I think it'd make a lot of people happy if it is carried out, the repair of some of our roads. And then lastly, one thing that I wanted to bring back for, just for everyone's awareness on the council, is with the Affordable Housing Alliance, there is a proposed change that Chris Collier, who has been leading AHA for a while, would become a part of HSCO and would be a HSCO rep to AHA. In terms of budget changes, I think that's still to be determined, if any, but that conversation is happening in a meeting in the beginning of June. I'll forward some of that information to staff, but if you guys were able to take away anything that the council should be aware of before that's voted on in early June, I think that would be really helpful. And, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Foulter.
I saw that one coming. So echoing my co-councilman, that was excellent summary of our trip. It really was, I think it was pretty well done. Kudos to Deborah and to Liam for doing that. The Chamber Luncheon was today, so I attended that. The City Hall tour, I'm so amazed by what's happening over there, really looking forward to getting into that building, but excellent job to Jordan, who's not here, and Jacob, who is. And also, the new crossing at Sam and Main Street, yay, well done. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
We just never know what you're going to do. Oh, my goodness. Wow. Well, yes, the trip to DC was just phenomenal, and Kevin, I don't think any of us can top your wonderful recap of that, but one thing that really struck me, and Liam and Deborah both, wow. And it was great to have Director Bailey along. He weighed in on a lot of the meetings that we attended and had a lot of really, really salient points to make, so thank you, that was great to have you along. I do think that filing week was just this past week, and obviously running again, and I think about that when we go to Washington, DC, and we're making these connections with people, that as we head into, I head into another term, these connections are important, and it's important for the same people to go and to have connections with Cantwell and Murray's staff and Susan Delbene's office. I just think that we're building a foundation and sort of, they're just building blocks for us to continue to go do good work, and I think it's important for people in Monroe to know that we are there working for them. We are trying our best to create safe rail crossings, we are on top of the issues that matter to them, and we do make an effort to go back and work on the federal and state level to do some good work in Monroe. And it's not just coming to council meetings every week and going to events, we actually are trying to advocate and get some work done, and we also have a whole lot of fun while we do it with this great group up here, and Kirk and Jason, we missed you, but it was just a wonderful trip in so many ways. And, gosh, I don't have much more to say than that, other than Councilmember Walker and I did attend an SEC meeting, that's Snohomish County Cities, and that's always time well-spent networking with other cities in Snohomish County, always great speakers, and we will continue to go to those and learn and learn from other cities about their best practices. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
So, yes, DC was great. Thank you, Administrator Knight, Liam, and it was great to have you there as well, Lance, and of course, with everyone else. I have to say, I didn't go there with great expectations. We have a state that's $15 billion in the rears, and we have a federal government that is cutting everything. So when you go in there asking for support and funds, I didn't have the highest of hopes. It was absolutely 100% worth it. Having those connections, being able to carve out some funds for our community is a big thing, very worth it, and like you had said, I get questions of, does every city do this? And I'm always proud to say, no, there's actually some fairly significant cities, as far as population go, that aren't as active as we are. So it's something that I'm proud to go on and try and carve out some funding for the things that we need to support our community. I talked with a resident today, just to pass on to staff, one of the main reasons that they moved to Monroe was because of city staff, and I thought that was such a cool thing to hear. So it wasn't because council was awesome, it was because city staff was so great and so easy to work with. They felt that, no matter what the problem was, staff was very professional and listened. So that was a cool thing. I actually heard that today. So I thought I would pass that on, so kudos to everyone sitting out there, and the people that have gone home also. And I think that's everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. All right. Staff and department reports, we do not have a Parks Department report this evening. Ben is in Eastern Washington at an event that sounds like it's honoring our former Mike Farrell. So the next item on the agenda then is mayor and city administrator reports, and city administrator report extended agenda, Deborah Knight.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to next Tuesday's meeting. We have a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting. We will be addressing some personnel policy updates to our anti-harassment and anti-violence policy with Ally Edwards, and then a discussion item with Ben Swanson on park user fees. For a special workshop starting at 6:00 PM, that will be then the opportunity to talk about transportation impact fees for accessory dwelling units, system development charges for accessory dwelling units, and park impact fees for accessory dwelling units. That starts at 6:00. And then at 7:00 PM, we will have our regular business meetings. There is an announcement and presentation about the annual POWW proclamation. Public hearings then will be held on an ordinance amending the code converting existing structures to residential. That'll be a hearing and first reading with Leanne Barr. An interim ordinance for R7 Zone, that is a hearing with Anita Marrero, and then an accessory dwelling unit code amendments, that's a hearing and first reading with Amy Bright. So as you can see, there was a lot of work that was done in order to hit those June 30th deadlines as required by the state, and that's why you're seeing all of the planning staff in front of you over the next couple of weeks. The consent agenda then includes accounts payable and receivable, meeting minutes, citywide rezone adoption, and contract amendments with J-Ray, that's mine, and then the mayor and administrator reports, and an executive session for potential litigation. Moving on then to May 27th, we will not have a P3 committee meeting or a regular council meeting that night, so that, both those meetings have been canceled for Memorial Day. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. City administrator report.
Couple of items. As I mentioned earlier, the Finance and HR Committee meeting on the 20th, we'll have that early start time at 5:30 PM, and so there were some dinner choices for those that are planning to attend. If you plan to be at that meeting, please just let Jody know if you didn't get one of those dinner choices, and that deadline is Friday the 16th, this Friday. The Puget Sound Regional Council, the annual general assembly is scheduled for May 22nd. You can contact Liam if you're interested in attending that. The AWC Annual Conference, and this is the Essential Insights for City Leaders, that's June 24th through June 27th in Kennewick. Again, Liam McCorkle is your contact if you'd like to attend that. We have the City Hall and Municipal Court ribbon-cutting has been moved to July 14th at 4:00 PM, based upon feedback from council, that the original date of July 7th had conflicts for a number of council members. And then finally, I wanted to share a kudos from the Rotary, Monroe Rotary Club. They went out last week to clean up, pick up litter at Lake Ty Park, and there was literally no litter at Lake Ty Park. Our Parks grew a bunch, has a fabulous job, we were literally littering, no, we were picking, we were picking up just the little tiny pieces of paper left over from the egg hunt, that's all that was left out there. We actually collected more garbage on the school district property than we did at Lake Ty, but kudos to our Parks team, they just do phenomenal work. That park gets a lot of use, and it takes a lot of attention to keep it maintained as it is. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Just on the previous one, sorry, it doesn't show canceled yet, it just said the Reserve for Special Meeting Workshop Retreat 63.
Oh, those are the first meetings of every month, I've just reserved for those, but that will be canceled.
Okay. Just checking. I'm going to be on a plane, so that's why I wanted to double-check. All right, great.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any questions for the city administrator? All right. Seeing none, I've got a couple of items. One, Ms. Carlson's class has sent you all a thank you note, I'm going to go ahead and hand this down. Kevin, when it gets down to you, if you could just give it to Jody, I'd appreciate that, so that it is maintained in the record. Okay, thank you card. Happy Mother's Day. You'll see a proclamation in there for the two moms that are on the council, so happy Mother's Day to the both of you. Also, last week was Police Week. One of the challenges with how we're doing our council meetings right now is that we need to get into a different method in terms of getting the proclamations out, but you'll notice that there are a number of them in tonight's meeting. So Police Week was last week, this is a week that is part of the National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and just please keep our law enforcement officers in your prayers and in your hearts. They do a lot and put themselves at risk, and I really value the work that they do. So, again, that was last week. Then tour, Kirk, I've got you taken care of there, got it? And then rules of procedure, so Jody and I have been doing a road tour. We have gone to three of our BCCs so far. We met with CHSAB, we met with the Economic Development Advisory Board, and we met with Planning Commission, Planning Commission was last night. We've been going over the rules of procedure, it's been taking anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, I think is what we've been averaging going through them, making certain that they are aware of things like we don't yield during a meeting, that they should be switching over their chairs every two years so that we maintain continuity, rather than one person being chair for four to 10 years and everything. Been talking about things like attending meetings in person, that attending meetings remotely should be the exception, not the rule, and about how to handle public comment and so on and so forth. So the process, again, takes about an hour to an hour and a half. If you're interested in seeing those presentations, there was one that was recorded last night for Planning Commission, it'll be up on YouTube, if not already, it is already. for Planning Commission. It'll be up on YouTube, if not already. It is already. You can hear Jody give her presentation and me give my spiel that supplements the presentation. My attempt is to make certain that I'm conveying what I heard from the council to underscore those things that are important in addition to talking through some things related to meeting management. Last thing that I have on my list this evening is the West Roundabout. Councilmember Walker had contacted me, and I had noticed it also. I go that way to and from work every day. The grass on the sort of, we'll call it the triangle for the on-ramp, getting onto 522, had become really high. It didn't look good, and to me, it's sort of a gateway to our community coming from the west. When my wife was driving, I took a picture from the passenger seat, for the record, and sent that off to Jaka and asked that he follow up with DOT to have it taken care of. Unfortunately, what ended up happening was somebody went in and just cut the grass and the shrubs that were there, leaving only trees. I followed up with Jaka yesterday with a huh, and he responded to me. We spoke today. I have learned, and Jaka has learned, that at some point when we made an amendment to the roundabout paperwork, we ended up taking over responsibility and ownership of the rest of the roundabout. And so we're now responsible for maintenance. And unfortunately, the person who went out to do the maintenance from the city, not DOT, didn't get the message on how to mow or maintain that space. And as a result, while I was, I'll just go with irate, rather than use other words that I'd like to use, although I was irate at DOT thinking that they should have known better, it was an honest mistake from somebody with the city. So we'll be talking a little bit more about that. The vegetation that's in there, the shrubs that are in there are expected to come back. So they have like snowberry and things like that. It's native vegetation. It's more resilient than other things. It's not like English boxwood or a Sago palm or something like that out there that is gone now. But, you know, my sincerest apologies that that happened for those of you that noticed it. And, you know, we all learn and move on. So if anybody has any questions or concerns about that, please let me know. But it did start from the right place, which is, let's make certain things look good, and that you also have visibility for cars that are merging into your lane. So, Jaka, did you have anything to add on that? Okay. Thank you, Jaka. And I think that's all I have. Oh, lastly, the tour this evening. I didn't attend the tour with you at the former Union Bank Building, but it was a real pleasure walking through with each of you that was able to make it, to take a look at the, you know, the campus redo. I think we've got something that people are going to enjoy working in, which is really important for being competitive, to bring people to work for the city. I'm looking forward to people coming back to the campus and seeing them in person. One of the things I'd like to see, among other things, is when we have consultants presenting and maybe even Zach, to see them in the actual physical space with us. I don't know that people who are remote understand that there's a lag in communication, and it is just not natural. People who are not physically present in a room giving a presentation don't understand what people are feeling in the room at the time. And I have noticed that there's a disconnect in delivering messages. So not only the boards and commissions, but also looking at staff being more present and being able to interact more is something that's going to be really important for our community and also for our staff. One of the things that I was mentioning, I think to, I think it was Kevin, might have been Jake, I don't know, one of you, that my last five years have been a little unusual as a mayor. The 2020, we all know what happened in 2020, and we had to go remote. We then came back for what felt like six months. And then we all went into this kind of weird remoteness, again, because of redeveloping the campus. Currently, my desk, which I have not sat at, because it would be odd, is a little desk like this in an office that I would share with Liam and with Deborah. And it's going to be nice to have an office again where we can meet people and do things like that. So I think we're developing a great space. I'm looking forward to seeing community members there, staff there, holding meetings there, and having people back in a physical location again. So I do thank the council for your investment in that much-needed space. In 2003, when I started off as a council member, we knew that that space needed to be redone. And it is, it's really cool. I'll just go with that. It's really cool to see it actually getting done. So thank you all. And I do thank the staff for all the work they're doing with that as well. I think that's all that I have right now. Does anybody have any questions for me on the mayor's report? All right. We do have a need for an executive session this evening, and that is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, subsection 1, subsection little i. I am told that we are going to do this for an initial seven minutes. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make it an initial eight minutes, so that I can go with a round number. The time right now is 9:17, so we're gonna go into exec session for initial eight minutes. We will either be out of executive session or be extending at 8:25. There will be, there will be action to follow. Yes, 9:25. Thank you. 9:25. There will be action to follow after executive session, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting. We are now in executive session until, for an initial eight minutes, beginning at 9:17.
The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes. The executive session has been extended five minutes.
Okay. All right. We are back out of executive session. Unless there's objection, we are adjourned. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.